So it now being 6 o'clock, I will call the January 28 Monday Board of Selectment meeting to order.
5:30.
5:30, sorry. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. Phones on vibrate. The first item on our agenda is welcome to Terry Walker. Terry is a grant writer that we became aware of through the town of Monterey and wanted to just chat about a little bit about maybe your background, Terry. If you wouldn't mind using the microphone here. The selectmen have been looking at how we might find grants so that things that we would like to do would not impact the tax rate. And to that extent, we've asked Terry if she would be willing to come out and maybe chat with us and give a little bit of the background. So.
Okay. I started writing grants back in the 80s.
You need to speak up a little bit. Some of us have old ears here.
Okay.
And we definitely don't want to miss a word. That's Liz's problem because she got all this new stuff for our sweet Ann.
It's the Green Community Grant. Darn.
Hey.
Yay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I've been in municipal finance for, since 1987 and worked for several towns as an accountant, different areas, and I got into grant writing. First grant was for preschool program and it just snowballed from there. I brought in five, four half million dollar grants for road, the Mass Works grants and two million dollar grants, which is paving, bridges and that sort of thing. And I enjoy it a lot because I'm able to, you know, talk to businesses and towns and put a grant together to fit the needs of the town. And all these grants keep the taxes down because like the million dollars to pave a road keeps the taxes down because the grant pays for the million dollars and it's, we don't have to pay any of this back to the state. It's all state funded. I've gotten federal grants for fire equipment. It's, you know, different towns ask me to write grants for the needs. So whatever, you know, this town needs, I would help you do that.
Well, we certainly need help. I think we are struggling a little with how to go after them because we haven't done this ourselves to any trade extent. The individual departments have done some work. We're trying to look at it from a overall town view.
I have contacts for road paving, bridges. When I rode around town today, there's bridges that need, they're in disrepair.
Right.
There's affordable housing grants, but I do have all the contacts because I've been doing this for like 14 years.
Okay.
So what do you ascribe your success to?
My success?
Yeah.
I, there was an article, I'm from the northern part of Maine and my success was because of my eighth grade teacher, you know, to explain, to write from the heart and explain things so people can understand what you're talking about. So I gave her a lot of the credit.
So actually, this is a sort of a question just of interest. We like to think we're a little bit unique and certainly all towns think they're unique, but within the South Shore, I think we've really retained our fairly unique agricultural and rural character despite exurbia all around. And it feels to us like it's a cogent story to tell a grantor. Is that useful, that piece in applying for a grant?
It certainly is. Because I tend to weave into the grant how you need to keep the rural beauty and keep the town looking beautiful and the rural feel to your grant. You want to keep your town the way it is, but have a way to utilize the grant so that it doesn't affect your, the beauty of your town and make it look like, you know, for instance, a bridge, we'd want the bridge to fit what this town needs, not something that Boston would have, like to fit the landscape, you know. But there's, you know, I take pictures, I go home and design something, you know, like in my head, what would look good in this town, like for instance, that bridge. And then we go to Boston and discuss it with the engineers.
So what kind of, on average, and you have this big list of success stories. Congratulations.
Thank you.
What kind of timeframe is involved in this? I presume it's fairly wide range, but.
Some grants would take about 400, 500 hours. Some I would do in 40 hours. It depends on, there's a lot of factors in there like this, well, if I get the support of the selectmen and people working together, that makes a big difference.
So some of these grants took 400 hours of your time?
Yes. Because you have, you might have to write a sentence three times, you may have to take a trip to the site with the engineers. I've taken trips to Boston to do my presentations. Each one is different.
And do you have a sense ahead of time on these, on the likelihood of success? I mean, it's one thing to spend 400 hours on something that, you know, brings in half a million dollars, it's another thing to spend that and be declined.
Well, one year I went to Boston five days in a row with five half million dollar grants and I was awarded four out of five. So I felt good doing the presentations. Now you have to do it online and submit it, but when you go there and bring overhead projectors and pictures and discuss it with the individuals, it was, I felt good and I got four out of five that week, so.
So would you be looking to us for direction or would you be going out and looking to see what you could find if you were to take this on for us? Would you go out and find grants and then come to us and say, do you think, is this something we want to pursue? Or would you look for some direction for us ahead of time to say, you know, we're interested in these types of grants, can you just explore and see what you can find?
What I need from the selectmen and the administrative assist, the town administrators, support, contacts. I need to know all departments in the town, what they need, the needs of all the departments, not just the selectmen, but fire, police, highway, council on aging, everybody has to bring their needs to the selectmen and then let me know. But I would also, if I find a grant, of course, like the bridge one, I feel good about that one already because I saw the condition of the bridge.
Well, we've got a capital improvement plan which has a lot of the departmental needs already laid out and we have kind of budgeted when we can take those projects on. That would probably be a good starting point for a lot of information on some bigger dollar items that different departments are looking for.
Sure.
Yeah, that sounds wonderful. So a lot of collaboration, I'm thinking?
Yes.
With most of these, you're working with other department heads and so, but you would be basically the lead for writing the grant and we would be more of a support staff in getting you the documentation or whatever support you needed to make that happen?
Yes, because like for the Mass Works grants, million dollar grants, you need, have a public hearing. So I need the abutters from these assessors. So, you know, we need the abutter list and we need to have public hearings so that all has to work, we have to work together.
Coordination of effort.
Teamwork.
Yeah, okay, very good.
Liz, did you have some?
Um, no, not really. I had an opportunity to speak with Terry at length earlier and we went over her background thoroughly and everything. I think that she could be a real asset to a town, especially given our size and her expertise with some of the grants for smaller towns.
I think one of the things we're going to have to work on, maybe you and Liz, is we don't know quite how to approach this in terms of remunerating yourself.
Uh huh.
And we want to make sure it works for both of us.
Correct.
So I think we can take that as a way to go forward.
Okay.
We, I think, feel pretty good, at least seeing what we're seeing, that we'd like to at least take, start going, maybe pick a grant and see how we do on it.
Sure.
Liz can supply you with the capital plan so we can start looking.
All right.
I know in the past when we've gone out to departments to say, what would you like? We don't always get a, you know, a feedback that helps us in a way, sometimes no feedback. But I think once you're in, they see that somebody actually knows how to do this, that all of a sudden we'll start to hear more things coming forward.
Of course. Like I just brought one for $6,000 for council on aging in the town where I work.
If you can do that for us, we'd be.
But I, if you hire me, I need to be contracted services.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because I'm retired from, I've been working for towns for 37 years, a long time. So I, I'm retired, so now I have to be just a contracted service grant writer consultant.
So I would suggest you and Liz talk and see if we can come up with a draft of how you think it'll work and we go forward.
Yeah, and you're interested?
I am, definitely, yes.
Do you think you could do this remotely or would you have to come to town?
I'd have to come to town a couple of times a month.
Okay, how far away was it for you?
It's two, two and a half hours, but it's, I love it. The drive was great.
Yeah.
It was like being in Western Mass most of my adult life, this is a change and I enjoyed it.
Well, great. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
This is very exciting.
Yep, it is.
Thank you.
Good.
All right, so you guys are gonna see what you can hash out.
Yes, absolutely.
So are you heading home tonight?
I'm staying in town.
Oh, good. Good, not till tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Good, very good. Well, thank you so much for coming in.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Terry, appreciate it.
Very exciting.
See, the next thing we have on the agenda is the right of first refusal for the gift of land.
Mr. Chairman, I think we really have to wait until 6.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right.
You're right. So why don't we go to Patrick Ganley, Eagle Scout Service Project?
Thank you. So I would, I would like, my project plan that I would like to pursue would be to beautify the flagpole with the memorial rock with a plaque on it right outside in the parking lot. And I already went over this with Bridgette. I met with her and we walked outside and talked about it along with my mother. And in that page I highlighted, I have like some pictures of the area along with a physical plan of what I would like to do. And in the page behind that, I have a drawing of what it might look like.
You know, it's interesting that we'd been talking about this and I didn't realize that you were coming forward, so this is really opportune for us. We do feel it needs to be dressed up. We're not doing a service to the monument that's out there. So this is great.
Yeah, it's really become a state of disrepair with the erosion out there. So this is a very nice project.
When would you do this, Patrick? Would you start in the spring?
Yeah, I would like to start early in the spring as soon as the weather.
April timeframe, something like that?
Yeah, as long as the weather will allow.
Sure.
So what kind of expenses are involved?
Um, well, for expenses, we're thinking that the planters would be, would be some of the expenses, the crushed rock, if we may not be able to get it donated, however, we are looking into that. And I will find a way to fundraise for the money.
So it's exciting and surely that area needs it. My only concern is we are in the midst of sort of master planning, maybe the parking lot and the whole area. It may be years before we get that done. And I, I mean, I hope that this will work out and we go ahead with it. Only I think we all need to be aware that it's not impossible that a year or two from now, maybe if our, our new fundraiser has come up with a couple of grants, that we might be redoing the whole parking lot. But in the meantime, something like this to make it more beautiful, to make it look like we care, I'm thrilled. I'm excited about the project.
I assume the plant is, I'm assuming they're going to be fairly heavy, but they could be moved if we had to.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's the only thing I would worry about because who knows when we'll be able to do everything we're talking about. I think this is a great, great project. Exciting.
So you probably just need, what, a vote from us to authorize you to undertake the project and is there anything else we need to do to help you?
Just someone to be selected as a beneficiary.
Okay.
So someone to be the benefic, but on the last page, it has a beneficiary representative, so that'd be one of you. The town is the, is the beneficiary as far as the scouts are concerned, has to be an organization, not a person.
Okay.
But there needs to be a representative, someone that would sign off on the progress.
When do you think that you will start the project?
Um, hopefully early spring.
Do you think you'd be done with it in the spring or will it go longer than that? Because I was going to say, John, because he's the chair, but maybe we could just have it set up, whoever's the chair will be the beneficiary for the Board of Selectmen instead of being specific.
It would be a, you know, a weekend or two.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah.
And you need this signed now?
If we can, then he can go, he has to present this.
One side.
Perfect, that sounds great.
And then that, that could take a couple of weeks.
So we do a motion? I make a motion, you sign this and we forward with this project.
Perfect.
Second?
I bet you Christine's gonna say.
Yeah, I absolutely will second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Great, thank you. This is a great project. Look forward to it.
All three copies signed.
Yeah, and you could ask Mr. Trainer if he could sign.
Do you just need one copy or do you need?
We prefer all three.
One, three copies, you got it.
You can keep the front pages, we just need the back.
The signature page, got it.
We are really appreciative of your initiative on this. Thank you so much. Tell others. We have plenty of projects.
Now, will you put up a sign that says this is an Eagle Scout project or something to let people know that? Because I think that's been done on other projects where they'll put up a little sign that says, yeah, that would be nice to let people know. Good, very good.
I continue to be amazed by the scouting troop we have going every year. It's just amazing.
Yeah, it's very good for the boys because they grow up into much better men.
There's two, we've got one more.
We have a request, can we get a picture?
Sure, absolutely.
You can get the selectmen, the true.
Do you want to get, yeah, John, why don't you go down front?
Well, let's all go down front.
Come on this side, we can get the rest of us one.
Thank you so much.
Great job. Excited to see it. Let us know if there's anything we can do to help.
We shall.
You guys want to keep one of these?
Yeah, absolutely. Probably need to put in Liz and, right.
Next up. We have, you're gonna.
Sure. So here in the townhouse, we were looking to do some updating of things for relatively low cost or no cost. And we were fortunate enough to have Karen Foye, who runs the Plimpton Helping Plimpton Facebook group. She stepped forward along with Christine Kelly, who is our assistant treasurer, collector. And they had a wonderful idea as far as taking photographs that people from town had taken, different key areas around town. And Ms. Foye was generous enough to have those printed up for us on a slightly larger scale. And we were able to coordinate with Christine Kelly and get those photographs framed and they are proudly on display here in the building. So we just think it's a really nice project and we wanted to recognize you and also the Plimpton Helping Plimpton Facebook community. And it's really just, it's so nice to see, it's given such a refreshment to our building.
Thank you. Yeah, Mark asked if I would come. I hadn't even been in the building to see them hanging up yet. Christine said there's a few more that she just got more frames for to hang up.
She has two more that we just.
So I told them I would come and at least give credit to the people who had, whose pictures were selected. Now, I know sometimes people don't use their real name as their Facebook username, so I'm just going to tell you what it says. Because CJ Quinn, I don't know who that is, but it had some other initials in there too. Julia Whalen, myself, Darlene Solari, Maureen George, Stephanie Taren, Chris Bedeau, Julie Muskinis, and Kelly Folsom, and Lisa Maffioli. It all, those were all the pictures everyone voted, whichever ones got the most votes. I kind of went through and enlarged them if they were big enough to enlarge that big, you know what I mean? Sometimes they put a little small image and you can't enlarge it big enough, so, but you're welcome and I'm glad some of these.
We're looking very professional here now.
Yeah, it really is.
It really looks nice and it's, I don't know. It just adds such a nice feel to the building.
Absolutely.
It's nice to integrate a little bit.
We've had lots of very nice comments and that makes everybody feel good.
It was all Christine. I went in to pay a tax bill and she said, you know, you need photography, I always see those pictures. Anyway, you know, it was all her idea. I said, I can do that. So I'm constantly submitting jobs for the town for the school sports, getting prints done, so I just added it to another job and threw it in, so.
Do you think the people who took the pictures would be interested in having their name on them?
I can ask them on Facebook and just see if they want their names, add a little tag next to them.
Good idea.
Yeah, and the location or, you know, for people that don't know, yeah.
Yes, well, we all know whose turkey that was and the turkey, the baby turkey, so.
Yeah, the beautiful pictures, that was very.
Thank you. On a totally different note, the Girl Scouts in relation to the town area out front, we have been doing the community garden out there for five years. Unfortunately, my troop has shrunk from about 15 to 20 kids to about six now that they're getting older. And we've tried handing off the job of maintaining the community garden out there, but we have yet to find a troop that wants to take it over. So it may be something, the Garden Club, I can reach out to them. But we don't want it to be an eyesore. We would, there's a lot of perennials planted in there that will come back on their own. But it does, you know, we got a lot of good comments, nice comments from people when we were maintaining it. I just don't have the hands to do it anymore. And I knew that day would come, but we were also told that there was going to be some renovations out there, so we weren't sure how long it was going to be out there anyway. But if you know anybody that's interested in taking it over, we have the watering reel, the fire department lets us park that up there and we can use that to water. And I'll just leave that there, so.
Yeah, I'm sure we can.
I'm happy to work with you on that. We can figure something out.
Yeah, I just hate to see it abandoned, so.
Garden Club is somewhat in abeyance right now, but maybe this would be a way of reinvigorating.
Maybe the Tropical Society might be interested in terms of getting.
The fun part, planting is the fun part. It's the weekly watering and weeding, that's getting people up there to do that. You know, we had vegetables in there one year and I think everyone was afraid that they were taking the Girl Scouts vegetables, so they just let them stay there. And of course, Girl Scouts, not many of them like vegetables. They're like, just take them. So, yeah, hopefully we'll find somebody.
So we get so much done by volunteers that other towns do it in a different way.
Yeah.
We're right up there at the top of the list of doing so much volunteering.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Karen.
Next, Mr. Sylvia. The fire chief wanted to do a recognition.
So I'm not sure if someone is here.
Mark is here.
Is he?
Yep.
You may or may not know, the Elton Club gave the fire department a very generous gift, the gift of being able to train on some property that we had purchased specifically at home, at house at the entrance to the Elton Club, that they had purchased for future plans and it allowed us, and I say us, public safety, to utilize this property for some unbelievable training. I can't thank you enough for what you allowed us to do. We have Department of Homeland Security there, the rest of our team teams, we have our members from the Plimpton Fire Department there, Halifax Fire Department, Comer Fire Department, Middleborough Fire Department, for live fire training and rescue scenarios, both for civilians and for firefighters that you don't get that opportunity very, very often. Also, the Pat Land's Benjamin, the chief of Middleborough, who helped out quite a bit, and the representatives who did the work for us as well, to the departments necessary to do what we did. It was a tool that we actually had an incident about a week later where we worked with three of our fire departments at the same time. And everyone recognized each other, knew each other's skills and the comfort level, never would have happened if it wasn't for you and your club giving us the self-taught training. And you just made a small plaque for the serving protect, if you did perhaps. And graciously, in your club, we are very proud of you and we're proud of this. And I just want to personally thank you. Thank you very much.
That was going to be my rave for tonight, but.
Yeah, what an amazing opportunity to get some really important training. Oh my gosh.
You can't put a value on that.
No, I mean, some of these new kids on the department never would have seen a house fire before or experienced what they did. So this is just such a blessing that they have, you know, their first experience is in a controlled environment where they're not freaked out and they have some direction and have an idea on how to proceed and.
I will go on the record, being the new chief, I was, I hate to say we're surprised, but in a way I was pleasantly surprised at the talent and the commitment that we have here from our firefighters and how well they interfaced with the surrounding towns. Clearly, we're a new era and I couldn't have more proud of these guys.
Great. Well, that's great to hear.
Thank you.
I went over, I don't know what day it was, the burn house in Halifax. And they have all the towns come together too, to have a, Halifax has a concrete building over there that they do different scenarios where they go in and, you know, it's all smoke and it's really, I like the idea that all the towns are working together. That's great. We've needed that.
Definitely.
Yeah. Thank you, chief.
Pleased for coming in.
And thank you, Mike, appreciate it. The award of the contract, do you have this, Elizabeth?
I do.
This is for the exhaust removal system in the Plimpton Fire Station?
Yes. So we have received three prices in. And the low bidder, we actually went back to them for some follow-up information as far as references were concerned and clarification on a few items. The chief was gracious enough to talk to his colleagues in some other communities who had utilized this particular company. And although the references came back stellar, you know, no problems, that they're an excellent company, it doesn't seem like that particular manufacturer for that system is really what we're looking for. And then the chief did some further follow-up, actually spoke to the manufacturer who essentially said that they don't recommend installing that type of unit in a firehouse per se, that that's not its most common application. So in that case, we're recommending that we. So in that case, we're recommending that we vote to award to the second lowest bidder. The amount came in at $24,662. And it's for Air Vac or the Air Vacuum Corporation. They're based in New Hampshire and they had a lot of great references, departments around here that have installed that system. Where it got a little confusing for us was the most common application that you see are systems that utilize hoses that actually connect to the tailpipe to the vehicles. We simply don't have the space for that.
Right.
You know, as it is trying to squeeze six vehicles into that station is a lot. Never mind the extra room it would take up with the hoses and all that. So we have to go with a non-hose-based system. So, the chief and I both feel confident in recommending that the selectmen vote to award to Air Vac. And again, that contract amount would be $24,662 and that we go from there.
Okay.
How are we paying for it?
This would be coming out of building maintenance. And then we would have to go to finance committee. They are aware of this, that this project's coming down the pipeline. It's long overdue and with the new OSHA standards that are being unraveled in February, the timing of it, it seems important that we act now. Our intention was to utilize a portion of the funding from selling that fire engine to offset it. But obviously, that can't happen until town meeting. So we would have put on a special town meeting article and just kind of explain to the townspeople that, you know, we received $61,000 for the fire engine. And in theory, we would like some of that money to be accounted for in paying for this.
And we had talked about that back a ways when Lance, the Middleborough Chief, was here. So I think this is, this is great.
Well, this is required for occupancy of the building.
Absolutely, especially with the new OSHA standards. We will have to do it anyways.
Right, there are a lot of changes coming down. September 1st, Massachusetts becomes an OSHA state. What that means is many of the safety regulations and environmental regulations that are put forth by the federal government in conjunction with the state governments that apply to private sector will now apply to public sector, which is very important. But also with this installation of the air system, it is our first step in being able to reoccupy the firehouse and remove the trailer that has been sitting there for the past several years. Which has been known as a bit of an eyesore, if not a lease parking issue. But to put our firefighters in that station, we have to go control the exhaust fumes from the engines. As the town administrator mentioned, I just speak with the lower bidder, a very good company. The company had very good recommendations as a company. But the product itself is not designed specifically for what we need to have happen. This second bidder, that nine eleven system, was designed for fire stations. And that is its only applications are very prominent in the enterprise, so.
Good, so we need a vote?
To accept, to award the contract for $24,662 to Air Vac Corporation for the installation of the exhaust removal system.
So I would second that.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What did we think this was going to cost when we were?
Around $25,000.
Okay, so it's coming in about what we thought.
Yes, this is the second time that we've put this out for responses. So it's been kind of a long time coming. And we feel confident with the Air Vac recommendations that this will be what we need.
How quickly will this be completed?
So, once there's a word, we have to get on this schedule, which I don't know how long that schedule is. But the actual installation of these systems themselves should be just several days.
Okay. So, do we need to get some type of waiver for the, from OSHA? Or will they just kind of leave us alone because they know we're working on this?
The way OSHA operates, unless there's a specific complaint, they generally don't investigate buildings and things like that. So no one will.
Great.
So it's also a lot of confusion about what OSHA means for municipal government now.
There is a lot of confusion on that. And at the Fire Chiefs Association of Massachusetts, as Ann will be coming up, we tell her to call the department. I hope to be able to bring you back some more information of how things look in the future.
Great.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
More good news for the fire department.
Yes.
It's great.
This is the first step.
Yeah, it's a very big step. It's one that we've been looking forward to for quite a while.
I should also mention in relation to this, we did look to see if there was grant funding available back when Chief Benjamin was here helping us out. And we were in sort of a catch-22 because the grants that are available for these types of systems, you have to show that the station is currently occupied. But you can't reasonably or legally occupy the station until you have the system. So it was more meant for people upgrading a system as opposed to brand-new install. So that's why we were unable to obtain grants.
Good, thank you, Chief. So, it's after six o'clock? I think we can entertain Mr. Kirsten. Would you like to do this, Mark?
Okay. So, I'll pass out the notice of the public hearing. And actually, tonight's agenda is in there as well. So, this is a public hearing and therefore, there's a few formal steps we have to go through. And so now we'll go through them. And the first step is opening the meeting and reading the hearing notice, which I'll do now. This appeared in the January 11th edition of the Plimpton Halifax Express. Notice of public hearing, right of first refusal. In accordance with the provisions of General Law Chapter 61A, Article 14, notice is hereby given that the Plimpton Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, January 28th at 6:00 PM in the main meeting room of the Plimpton Townhouse, Five Palma Road, Plimpton, 02367, regarding the proposal to exercise the town's right of first refusal for a parcel of land containing approximately 1.561 acres, more or less described as Upland Road, Plimpton, Mass., Plimpton County, as more particularly described in a deed recorded with the Plimpton County Registry of Deeds at Book 27373, Pages 335 and 337, the property, and known as Assessor's ID Map 12 Block 5 of Lot 1A. The property is owned by Margaret Alterstead, revocable trust the owner. The Board of Selectmen will consider whether the town will exercise the town's right of first refusal pursuant to General Law Chapter 61A, Article 14. The notice of intent to sell and accompanying documents submitted to the town by the owner may be reviewed at town clerk's office located at Plimpton Townhouse during regular business hours. Any person interested and wishing to be heard on the matter may appear at the public hearing at the time and place designated above. So that's the public notice. Ground rules for the evening are really, or for the public hearing are the usual. Testimony will be limited to the issues directly related to the subject. Only one person to speak at a town at a time. All discussion to go through the chair. All parties will expect it to conduct themselves civilly. So, in terms of a public hearing like this, there are really a couple steps. One is collecting evidence, which we'll do now. And once we've collected the evidence, that part of the public hearing will be closed. And then we deliberate and decide. So in collecting evidence, there are two phases. Evidence for people in favor of the town exercising its right of first refusal. We'll hear that first. And then we'll collect evidence of people opposed to the town exercising its right of first refusal. So, as we are required by our procedures, when we receive notification of the possible sale of this land, we let various committees know, in particular, Open Space Committee, Community Preservation, Water Commission, Ag Commission, Historic Commission, Affordable Housing Land Trust. The people that we heard that from on this were Concom and Open Space. And they both recommend that we not pursue our right of first refusal. And now we want to open it up if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak in favor of us exercising our right of first refusal that is attempting to purchase the land. Okay. And actually, I went a little out of order. So just one more moment. Anyone want to speak in favor of us exercising the right? So hearing none, we'll ask if there are any of those opposed exercising the right. And that was what I just said, Concom and Open Space both recommended. Anyone else want to speak against exercising our right?
I am not in favor of us exercising our right of first refusal.
Very good. So now we'll close the evidentiary part of the hearing. Sorry, this is a little more formal than it need be, but it's good practice for other ones. So now what we do is deliberate. And I am also in favor of not exercising our right of first refusal.
So be it.
If there aren't any more comments, I'd make a motion that we decline our right of first refusal.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we will provide Mr. Kirsten with a letter, an official letter, saying that we are declining-
That we are declining our right of first refusal.
Perfect. All right, so that was a motion by Mark, second by John, 30-0. Great. Thank you so much for coming in.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, yeah, sure.
As you know, Mrs. Kirsten is in assisted care. We were trying to close on Wednesday. Any chance that letter would be ready for the attorney? Quickly?
I can send it to you tomorrow morning.
Oh, okay. I'll give you my, can I have my email?
Okay, that's fine. And I'll send it off to you first thing in the morning.
Yeah, I know, when I text him tonight, he's going to say, "Oh, do you have the documentation?" So.
Yeah, I don't think there'd be a problem with that.
Glad to get that done. Sorry for the formality, but our recent experiences-
Doesn't seem like nothing.
I know, it doesn't, does it, Dave?
Well, the good side of that formality is we've learned our lesson along the way and we ended up with a 140-acre park by having proper procedures.
Exactly.
So.
Looking forward at some point, not too soon, to see what goes up.
It's a beautiful piece of property.
It is. That is a stellar piece of property. Okay. This position of town-owned land, what was-
Liz had put together a guideline on disposition of town-owned land.
Okay.
We never approved it. I don't even know if we ever discussed it. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We were supposed to discuss it, but we never did.
I'd like to put it off because I don't really know, unless you feel like-
Do you want to hold it for the next time?
What, the disposition of town-owned land?
Yes. It was just looking to create, what I had think that was a draft, to establish sort of an internal process for it.
Right.
So if somebody comes forward or if we get the list on, you know, an annual basis, let's say, from the treasurer's office, kind of like, what are we doing to determine if we're interested in it or not? So I was proposing sending it to Conservation, Open Space, CPC, like those types of groups, just so that it would give the town boards a chance to step forward if they thought that there was a reason to utilize the land.
Yeah, I'd love to hear from them if they don't have any comment.
And then we could-
So you don't need a vote on it? You can just go ahead and do it?
Yeah, I can, I'll send the draft out again. And I'll also, I think Linda Letty had received a copy of it. But I'll resend it to just some of those folks in case they have comments on it. Is that a good?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe give them a deadline, recognizing when their next meeting is.
Okay.
So they'll each get it on their agenda. So that's going to Concom, Open Space. So Open Space probably meets maybe next week, so. And Concom meets every couple of weeks. So those will be the ones, so hopefully.
I can send it off.
Does planning have to be involved in that?
That actually-
I think I may have.
Can't hurt to send it out.
I don't remember if I included them or not. But we could include them.
Okay, good.
Maybe the Historical Commission. If there's historical property.
You're right. Might as well do, just include them in it too.
Might as well. Before we go selling something or trying to sell something, make sure that people aren't interested in it for a town.
Sounds good.
Okay, use of the old townhouse. We did have a meeting last Tuesday, a workshop. And I think we got a lot out on the table. And I did send the recent use agreement to our legal counsel. I talked to him briefly on the phone. And they're just going to review it and see if there's any feedback that they have, especially around the use agreement.
And the concerns of one of the teachers?
Well, I think both of them had concerns around the liability portion of the agreement. And I think if legal counsel comes back and says, "Well, that's the way it has to be to protect the town," then that's the way it'll have to be.
Is Greg looking at it?
Yes. He said he'd have something by the end of the week. Signing authority delegation to town administrator. This came up in a conversation. It seemed like, from my perspective, I thought we had in effect delegated that. But I think we needed to clarify it and make sure that we were all in agreement and then just have a vote and-
Right, and so it wouldn't be taking the place of, say, Mark signing the warrants or anything like that. But what it would do is it would add me to that authorized list. So if for some reason you were unavailable, or even just in general circumstances, like if you authorize me to sign something, it just kind of puts that approval in place. But it's not meant to substitute or take the place of the Board of Selectmen signing. But if you are unavailable to do so, it adds me to that, kind of to that order as being able to do so.
Did you put some verbiage together, Liz, or could you? I mean, I feel comfortable with doing it. I just think we ought to have something in writing that we can circulate.
Sure, there's, Bridgette has in the office, I believe it's almost like a, it's like a little list basically that just says who signs first or who's, you know, able to sign for those different things. So we could add me to that.
Okay.
But again, it's not meant to take the place of, you know, the board signing authority certainly. But it adds me as a backup signatory if it's needed.
So we feel comfortable with it?
I do.
Okay. So I would make a motion that we approve the town administrator as a backup signatory on the list that's kept in the selectmen's assistants' office.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a license renewal, I'm not aware?
I'm not aware of anything.
Yeah, I guess that'll have to wait until Breeze back.
Yeah, I'm not aware either.
Review and adoption of board goals for 2019. We said that we wanted the town administrator's goals to work into ours and conversely, we wanted to work into the town administrator's. So I sent the draft around. I felt like we should now give Liz an opportunity to take a look at it. And then you feedback to us when you feel comfortable, whether you want to add something or delete something.
Okay.
Of our goals.
Of our, and the draft I had of her goals.
Okay.
Okay? So that when we can finally put them together and say, "Okay, everything we're doing and you're doing are in sync."
Yeah, there should be a certain amount of synergy.
It should be in sync. And the thing on your goals for the year is that I very much want to have that. So come time for evaluation, we can take a look at that.
Right, yeah, so we've got something to go about.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
So why don't we put that back on the next meeting?
Sounds good.
So that we can, and in the interim, if you could just circulate back?
Sure.
And if-
Absolutely.
Yeah. Good. Is that okay?
So I had included merely my attempt, but to synthesize our goals.
Yep.
Into the minutes, draft minutes that I sent out.
I thought it looked great.
So I don't know if we want to vote on those tonight, or.
Sure. But do we have?
I seem to have forgotten my.
Yeah, I read mine earlier.
So that was just a matter of word-smapping. It was mostly what we had discussed last time.
Do you want to read it, John?
So we're talking this piece here, that you're, okay.
Yeah, just one through eight.
Okay.
In terms of, and I'll just to put perspective on it, what we've done the last couple of years, which I think has been pretty cool, is on the agenda, listed the board goals for the coming year, if only each meeting, to remind ourselves. So I wanted to get the words close enough that every week that we had to listen to this list.
Yeah, okay.
That it continued to inform us and even inspire us, maybe.
Okay. So number one, long-range master plan for town campus. Number two, continue professionalization of town general and financial operations. Number three, grant acquisition. Number four, volunteer outreach, strengthen town committees, boards, and commissions. Number five, explore affordable housing opportunities and use of town-owned land and buildings. Number six, support town administrator goals. Number seven, continue protecting town's natural resources and unique character. And eight, encourage fiscally sound governance.
And that'll be for the first couple of hours, and then what are we going to do for the rest of the year?
I know. What are we going to do for the rest of the year?
It shouldn't take long. Now we've got Terry going to help us.
Yeah, I think it's a good, it's a solid group of goals.
Now, and this is embedded in the draft minutes. Want to just vote it so that it's there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So I would make a motion that we approve the draft minutes of January 14th, 2019, as written.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Second.
So maybe we'll have to remind Bree to change the agenda list.
Okay.
And I never did see the, her minutes from 1-7.
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Okay.
I wasn't sure if they went out maybe to everyone else, because I was.
No. I asked her to resend them today, but she must not have had time. And you did, oh, she wasn't in today?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And you did the 22nd as well.
Yeah. Are we up to minutes?
Well, I think we already did. Well, no, we aren't really. We took them out of order. Okay.
Yeah, we'll come back.
Okay.
So I think in terms of the goals, we just did the goals. We haven't been going through these again.
Okay.
To pick them up next time, unless you think there's something you want to talk about.
No, I'm fine with those being our goals. I just, I hope that whatever on Liz's list, obviously, is stuff worth concerned about, but hopefully there's some stuff that, you know, she's particularly passionate about.
I'm going to pick some strange things.
Great.
Perfect.
Good.
Perfect.
That's what we do.
I've got to keep it interesting.
Okay. We're on to town administrator updates.
Okay. So Art came in to see me today about that half hour that he was spending with legal on the acres and the separate system issue. As a follow-up to that, I also spoke with Linda Letty today, and she had some input that she wanted to provide. So in the interest of kind of keeping everybody informed and on the same page, I left it with Linda that she would follow up with Art directly. And if they felt like there was anything unclear, or if their positions differed too much, I authorized them another half hour from my legal bank in case they need to circle back with council, because Linda had some relevant information. And it sounded like she dealt with an attorney that was different who maybe than Art was dealing with. So I just didn't want anything to fall through the cracks.
I would just say, I think it's an incredibly important issue.
Yes.
And if we need to spend time on legal, I wouldn't be at all hesitant on that one. We need to get that one right.
Right.
And really pin down, both in the immediate situation and in the long term even more so. So we should go full speed ahead.
Yep.
And being absolutely clear on that one.
That was my thought on it, so I hope that's okay, but I told her, I said if you need to chat to legal, but I just wanted her to loop Art in so that they weren't, like, going in two separate directions.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Was the lawyer she was talking to part of KP or outside?
Part of KP.
Okay.
It was Amy Quesal, I believe.
Oh, sure.
I think Art may have dealt with Greg.
Yeah.
Okay.
He probably reached out to Greg.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure that.
So while we're talking legal, I did use a little bit of your half hour, another half hour.
That's okay.
But I had a 10-minute conversation with Greg Corbo on the Plimpton Historical Society lease and agreement of use. So it's yours now.
Handing over what remains of it.
The budget process is moving along. I met with FinCom last week, and I have another meeting with them coming up next Wednesday evening. And Barbara's been very helpful throughout the process, so everything's kind of underway with that. Carver Urban Renewal Plan. Christine and I have been on some emails from a resident on Montello who had some concerns regarding installation of a gate at the entrance to the development and everything. I was able to connect with the Carver Town Manager earlier today, and this is the update that he prepared, and then we can decide if we want to respond or go from there. He said that although it was discussed to a large extent during the meetings and everything, no actual gate itself was on the final plans. He said that in order to fully block through traffic on Montello with a physical barrier, it would require both Boards of Selectmen to sign off, as well as public safety sign-offs. And he cited mutual aid concerns with the fire department and that type of thing. He said, however, the plan for when the roadwork begins, they're going to actually have the roadway kind of veer off directly into the development. So he said if you're coming from 58 from Carver headed to Montello, that roadway will be, like, the configuration will be completely different, and it'll send you directly into the development, not down Montello to the residences. And likewise, he said, if you're coming from Plimpton on 58 and you go to Montello, that after the new configuration, it will basically end at a stop sign with almost like a T-like intersection. He believes it's on map F2 in the plan set, but I need to locate that, too, and just verify. And if we want to follow up, I left the door open for further conversation, but it was good at least to get the update from him and kind of know.
What's the date of this plan? Because the last plan I saw did show a gate on it, but mine was, I believe, from 2017?
Okay. So maybe there was an update in between.
And we never got a copy of it.
Okay. He gave me the, what he believes was the.
Okay.
Plan number.
Okay.
But if we can, I'll try to track that down.
Okay.
Just so we know. It's not like gates aren't done in other places. They use them from time to time, and usually the fire department or police department, that kind of thing, they have either like a master key or something like that. But obviously, if you're, you know, if time is of the essence, and I'm sure the chief could speak to that, it would, that could potentially be a hindrance or an issue. So I think maybe taking a look at that plan and seeing how significant this proposed curve is, will it alleviate the residents' concerns or will it not, is probably our next step.
I think they're afraid they're going to get some construction traffic down there, and they're going to get stuck down there. That even if we put signs that say, no through traffic, like, no trucks, whatever, that there may still be some trucks that get down there and they get stuck with.
Right.
But they would get stuck with a gate as well. There would be nowhere really for them to go. So I think that's their concern, is that there's still going to be people who are trying to use that as a cut-through to beat the lights or the traffic. But let's wait and see what's on that plan.
Okay.
And then the developer was very agreeable to being flexible, and if we felt that a gate was what was needed, he was all for it. So I think that we'll be able to figure something out. Just needs a little bit more work. I thought it was a done deal, but I guess not.
Yeah, I thought it was a done deal, too.
Yeah.
I think after, not just construction, but then once it's complete, that there'll be a lot of traffic of people who work there.
Trying to cut through.
Cut through.
Exactly. Exactly.
He did make it sound, too, like work won't be starting for a while. He was like, whenever this roadway or development, however many years from now, because it's years, plural, but I don't know, I mean, timeframes can change on a dime depending on.
Well, yeah, there will be prep work for the site.
Right.
Just to get it ready, and they're probably concerned about that as well, you know, just any type of traffic that will be down in there. But we're working on it.
Yes.
So, okay.
Good.
Good.
As far as the OSHA compliance coming out in February, I had a meeting with the highway superintendent today. He's going to be seeking some funding in his expense budget to cover some basic things regarding that. It was suggested to him that all 11 of the highway employees have the OSHA 10 construction training, just as a backup where they are working on, you know, town properties and things like that.
Where does that take place?
So usually you can, you can do it online, but usually for municipalities, it's recommended that you put together whoever you want in the class, and you have somebody come to you and do the class. That way they can tailor it a little bit more.
Do we pay for that, or?
We would have to pay for that. The high-side estimate is about $200 a person. It'd probably be a little less than that.
Okay.
But, you know, and then I was thinking if we did end up paying for that and convening a class, we might want Steve Sorrow to go, too, where he does a lot of maintenance on town buildings and everything. And we could certainly check with public safety, too, if they had, if they felt like there was anybody that should be there. So there's that. He's also, he needs to have hard hats available for the guys, depending on, like, where they're working and what they're doing. Also available to them, safety eye protection and ear protection when they're using, like, chainsaws and.
We haven't had that?
Things like that.
Really? I'm surprised.
Baseball cap?
I think it's available to them, but I don't know how up to date this equipment is. Gloves when needed, and also some reflective safety vests for when they're doing work out on the roadside. My suggestion to Scott was, if we're moving forward with this, I think it would be in his best interest to have a list of all his employees and have them physically sign for this gear and get it actually, like, here is your hard hat, here is your vest.
Yeah.
That way, in the event that there was an accident or something happened, at least we would have some sort of backup documentation, like, yes, these people were properly trained, and yes, they had a reflective vest that was issued to them by the town as soon as this, these regulations came out. And that, I just think that that might be in our best interest.
I think it makes sense. Perfect sense.
So this is a new regulation that's requiring this?
It's.
Does the OSHA training? Is this this February that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's the whole state is, we're becoming an OSHA-compliant state. Our insurance company just started sending out some different bulletins about it, so I'll see what information I can find, and I think the chief will be a wealth of information, because they're right on top of this as far as all the firehouses across the state and everything. But it'll, it'll cost some money. I mean, these, for the highway department, just the kind of superficial stuff that I mentioned, comes out to about $2,500 for the OSHA training, and then this, this set of protective gear. There's some stuff that I don't think would be all that applicable to them, like, they're not working in trenches or anything like that. You know, but then there's other stuff that is applicable.
So we'd be approving this funding at next year's town meeting? Is that the?
Yes. We would want to include it for town meeting, maybe as a warrant article, as opposed to in his expense budget. That way people can actually, I think people should know, like, what the cost is to these cities and towns.
We kind of know that we're really, we don't have any choice.
We don't.
Absolutely have to do this.
We don't have a choice, but, you know, I mean, it could be built into his expense budget, but I tend to be the mindset, if it's a fixed cost like that, let, let people see what.
We might want to do it the first time, but I can't imagine the life of these is very long, so probably after that, it should go into the expense.
After that, it would need to, for maintenance, so if a new employee started and needed something, we could include something.
It's hard to believe that with everybody having to do this, that we couldn't partner with Halifax or Carver or, you know, all three of the towns, Kingston, and do some large training for the highway department.
We might be able to. Although with OSHA training, you're also paying for the certificate itself that they issue you. So you would get a discount as far as having a bunch of people take the course.
But there will still be a set cost.
But you still have to physically pay for your little certification card. I do think we should pursue maybe a group purchasing collaborative. That's something, maybe I'll mention that to Old Colony.
Yeah, see if we can do some type of shared services.
The regional planning agencies are usually helpful with that, if you want to do, like, group purchasing.
Mm-hmm.
Or that kind of thing. Maybe we could get a better deal on some of the more, like, the supply end of things.
Right. And they may know of people that already have them scheduled, where we could kind of piggyback on their training session.
Right. So to be continued.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
And then I had received some information from Old Colony that I had requested about electric vehicles and that sort of thing. I think Christine was on the email, too.
Yep.
I did mention that to Terry in my conversation with her. So if we, if we're moving forward with her, maybe that would be something good for her to pursue. And also along the line of grants, I did get our two applications into Old Colony before the deadline for the technical assistance. So it was the one for them to update and make electronic our zoning map. And then it was also for the traffic study and the parking area here and pedestrian connections, and kind of bringing this all together. So we should hear on that, I would think, soon.
And we're going to have a final plan, too, for.
Yes.
The campus out here.
That should be coming soon. That's Lisa Sullivan that's working on it. She's been doing a wonderful job, though, with my green community stuff, all the final reporting. She was also assigned to that, so I'm assuming once that's wrapped up, that then we'll get a final master plan.
Did you see there was an interesting grant opportunity for, I think it was Fire, about a diesel vehicle? Getting an old diesel vehicle off your.
Yes. And I mentioned that to Terry, too.
Okay.
And we can talk, I'll talk to the chief about that. Also, Highway is going to be looking to replace, they have a one-ton vehicle right now that's not. It's a 2003, and the frame is rotted, and it won't pass inspection. So they're going to be looking for something new.
Is it the pickup, or?
It's similar to, like, a dump truck, but not like the enormous plowing ones. So they're going to be looking to replace that in the near future. And I think that they might go with something a little bit more versatile that can offer them some different options, and that's not so heavy and, so.
You mean like electric?
A Prius.
You bet.
While you were out, there was a, we had a pipe break downstairs?
I know.
Yeah.
It was rotted.
Right.
These are the pictures.
Is that our cost or their cost? It burst because they were doing something with the, putting in the thermostat or whatever to the green community?
It was rotted out, so I think that might end up being our cost, but we'll pursue it.
Okay. It happened because they were going to...
Old Colony is already working on it and seeing what we, what we might be able to do to offset it. But it was completely rotted, but it's one of those things, if somebody wasn't touching it or doing upgrades to the system, maybe it would have been for another 20 years.
Forever.
For correspondence, I received a letter from Tom Millius this evening. He wants to kind of finalize some things with respect to the wiring inspector position. So, he was hoping that the board would take a vote to appoint Mr. Varley, who's currently our alternate, to make him the permanent wiring inspector. And then he would also like to recommend Mr. Stephen Peterson as the alternate wiring inspector. And this was his recommendation, and Mr. Varley felt that Mr. Peterson would be a suitable alternate.
Is he in town or is he out of town?
Um, he, let me see. You know, I'm not sure what his street address is.
Actually, I could...
He's familiar though to both of them. He's done residential and commercial, like, electric work.
That name sounds really familiar. I don't know if he ever did this.
I don't see Scott.
It's, isn't it Steve?
Oh, Steve, I'm sorry.
Steve Peterson.
Yeah, I don't see it.
He has residential and commercial.
Yeah, that's right.
Experience.
I thought, no, we didn't take a vote on Scott Varley, I thought.
We did to make him the alternate.
Okay.
So, this would be a new vote to make him the permanent through June 30th, and then to appoint Mr. Stephen Peterson as the alternate through June 30th.
Do we have an appointment, Chief?
I don't have the slip. I just got this from a few moments before.
Let's see, we'll just make, do the vote off this?
So, if Tom's recommending it, I'm glad to make a motion.
You too, okay.
Both.
So, I would make a motion that, for the appointment of Mr. Linus Varley as the wiring inspector for the town of Plimpton, and that Mr. Stephen R. Peterson be appointed as alternate wiring inspector for the town of Plimpton.
Stephen with a V or PH?
PH.
Thank you.
PH, yes.
So, that was the motion?
Yes.
So, if that's a motion, I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, you're going to breathe, make up the appointment, and then I'll sign.
Yes. Then we have here a notification from the National MS Society. They're doing their annual bike race, which does go through a portion of the town on June 29th. So, they are looking for a sign-off from the selectmen. They need the permit through MassDOT.
Have we done this before?
Yes, yes.
This is the one we do every year?
Yes. It's that Cape Cod Getaway Race. And then after somebody from the selectmen signs it, then it'll go to police and fire also.
What's the date on that one?
June 29.
We need a motion, and 30th actually.
Okay, 6/29.
They'll be going through town on the 29th.
Okay.
But it's, the race itself is the 29th and 30th.
And it's, is it at Brook Street to 58? Is that the...
I believe so. They have the, they have, the route is in, in the documentation.
Because they always take the same route.
Yes, they use the same route, and they kind of estimate what times people will be traversing the roadways.
They have it broken down into...
Segments, exactly.
Yeah. So, why don't we just make a motion that we approve the National MS Society Cape Cod Getaway, that they can enter and exit through the town and...
Okay.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we also have here an appointment slip for Jacqueline Cratus as the alternate Council on Aging Outreach driver through June 30th of 2019.
Now, will she be using one of our vehicles or will she be using her own vehicle? Do you know?
This brings up the debate. Sometimes it varies.
Okay.
It depends if Jim is using the van.
So, it depends on what's available.
And that sort of thing.
I think pretty much she's using her own vehicle.
She's been using it for the most part, because usually Jim has the van in use.
So, I make a motion that we appoint Jacqueline Cratus as the alternate Council on Aging Outreach driver to June 30th of 2019.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You know, that might not be a bad use for an electric vehicle if, but I just don't know, they're not handicap accessible.
I wonder though if we could get, on that list of them, it also talked about replacing something and then putting a lighter duty vehicle, so maybe a minivan would...
Maybe.
I don't know.
You have to send that to Chris.
It's worth pursuing.
Absolutely.
Okay. So...
Thank you.
We're done?
That's it for me.
Okay. So, dates to remember, Board of Selectmen open meeting at 6 o'clock on February 11th and February 25th. The townhouse is closed February 18th in observance of President's Day. The minutes, we approved the minutes of 1:07, right?
No.
Which we didn't.
No, we're holding 1:07. We did 1:14 and 1:22.
Okay. And what's this December 17th I got? Somebody sent?
That's executive session.
Okay, do we need, have we done this one or...
Oh, these? No, I don't think we ever did these. I don't think we approved the minutes of December 17th. So, can we hold these?
Yeah, let's hold them until we have a chance to read them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we'll get those at the next meeting.
You want me to send them out?
Could you?
Sure.
So, that's 12/17, and then we'll have 1:07, and then we'll have today, which is 1:22.
There is an executive session for 1:07 as well.
Yeah.
That looked good.
It did.
I'll make a motion to accept the executive session minutes from January 7th as written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the ones, well, I think we have 1:22 to go there, I guess.
Oh, we didn't do 1:22 yet?
Well, you know, open session, January 7th.
Yeah, you know, she...
I have, I did, I did the minutes of January 7th.
Yeah, I thought you had approved those.
And I have them right here.
I thought those were approved, but we were holding the ones from December because she hadn't sent them.
Okay, so we did these, but the 12/17 are...
So, 12/17 is the one that we don't have.
Gotcha.
So, you guys will do it at the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll do it at the next meeting, okay.
And then we have 1:22 left to do.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of 1:22 as written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any, John, you have any? Nope, okay. I guess that brings us up to selectmen's rants and raves.
Well, I, I'll go first.
Sure.
My rave would be the potential opportunity to work with Terry. And I mean, this is something that we have been striving for years to do a better job of taking advantage of grant opportunities. And I think we've done a pretty good job.
We have, yeah.
You know, doing it on our own and other groups have as well. But to have someone with such a high level of expertise working with us, I think it's really exciting, an exciting opportunity for the town to, to be able to look at and address some of these projects that we've had pending, but we just don't have the finances to deal with it.
I think it's part of our professionalization, you know, with the fire chief, the police chief, town administrator, and now we take a look at having a professional grant writer. So, hopefully we can make this happen.
I agree.
All right.
So, I guess my rave is the board goals for the year. It's a great list. It's actually doable. It's a huge amount of stuff, but I'm reminded, as we get on that list every week, because sometimes we get kind of tied up in minutia, little things, but it reminds us of the big things. And as I said before, I think it's a pretty inspiring list. If we're lucky in the next year and we don't have too many cliffs that we fall off of along the way, I think we can make a lot of progress. Looking forward to that.
Well, I've raved about the fire in the past, so I'll pass on them. But I wanted to rave for the energy of the new Historical Society Board. I know I've, we've had, you know, a few nits that we've hidden. I did go to the pork supper after it was over because I had to work that night. But there were a lot of people in the room. The energy's been good. I think the list of things they've got out that they're trying to accomplish is going to be great for the town, so more power to them.
Yeah, absolutely. A long time coming. It's great.
Okay. Unless there's nothing further, I'll make a motion that we close the meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Wow, man.
Good night.
Nice work before 7.